...school committee. It's Tuesday, March 18th, and this meeting will be recorded and broadcast over local access channel eight and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. Thank you. We do have, I do have quorum here. I thank everyone for being here. There are changes to the agenda. We are going to do the, I'm pulling the public hearing up to the top of the meeting today for the budget, FY26 budget. So I do have people here and plus two of our people here have to go to Wellfleet to continue the budget process talk here. First of all, public comment. Members of the public may address the committee on matters not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. Under the open meeting law, the committee is unable to reply but may add items presented to a future agenda. Do you have anyone there, Amanda, who may be interested in commenting?
No, no one.
Okay.
Other than Director Hanscom is in.
Okay, thank you.
Right, I was gonna say, I was gonna suggest through the chair, I think Hope, what you're hearing tonight is that we're kind of rushing things along or moving things along rather quickly tonight because Judith Schumacher and I, the chair from the region, and I both have to head to Wellfleet right away for our next meeting. So I, I'm wondering if you might be able to...
Recording in progress.
Hey Devon, if you might be able to, if we could move her in first because hers will not take very long and we want to make sure that she has the motion that she needs.
And now that Devon's here, that can help, who can help us?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you Devon. There you go. We did change things around. We're gonna do the Cape Cod Collaborative amended articles of agreement. And since the director, Hope Hanscom, is here, and I welcome you to our meeting, Hope. Nice to meet you for the first time, even though it's virtual. So Devon, I'd like to review, you know, review what this is about. Can you do a little preview?
I could certainly do a bit of a preview, but I gotta think that Hope is gonna be able to speak to all of it.
Yeah, I think she can probably take it and I'm happy to respond to anything too.
All right, Hope, we'll let you take it, Hope, then. Thank you very much.
Sure, and yeah, thanks for having me. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. I was supposed to be on Nantucket tonight, but that boat got canceled, so now I'm in my kitchen. So, tonight you're voting, hopefully, to accept the amended articles of agreement for the Cape Cod Collaborative, which allows Plymouth Public Schools to become members of the collaborative. This has been in the works for a while, and the Cape Cod Collaborative Board of Directors voted to amend the articles to include Plymouth in their late February meeting, and now each member district needs to consider these amendments and, and vote if they're willing to accept the changes or not. So the only substantive change is adding Plymouth. Anything else that's changed is just to bring our articles into line with current regulations and laws. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Through the chair, this, I can concur, certainly this has been in the works for years, and so it's nice to see that we've gotten it to this level. So certainly, I have a full support behind Hope this evening and, and would encourage that you take the motion to accept Plymouth into the collaborative as well.
Thank you both very much. And we have, we have all received copies of the, of the agreement, Hope. Thank you very much. May I have a motion from the committee to accept the, the, excuse me, the amended articles of agreement as presented?
I make a motion to accept the...
Motion made by Deborah Raymond, second.
I'll second.
Second by Sarah. Any further discussion? None being, a vote please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously accept it, and thank you, Hope, for attending.
Thanks, Hope, for moving it along quickly tonight. Much appreciated.
Take care. Good night.
Okay, good night now.
And one thing if I can add about the topic here, so one thing that Hope had mentioned in our subcommittee was that there is a signature on a physical document that needs to be taken, and it needs to be sent to her, so I just wanted to double check that that's gonna get delivered by mail or...
Yeah, we're, we're on it. We are on it. We've got, it literally is sitting on Arlen's desk, and everybody is coming to sign it or what have you.
And's going by tomorrow morning to sign it.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up, yes.
Thank you, Devon. Appreciate. Let's see, okay, now we're moving on to the public hearing. It is time for a public hearing for the Eastham Elementary FY26 school budget, and I need a motion to go from out of our meeting into a public meeting, a public hearing for this purpose.
I make a motion to go into a public hearing.
A second on that?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now into a public hearing, and we will be returning to our other meeting, our regular meeting after this. And for this, I'm going to...
Turn it over to me.
Superintendent.
And I'm gonna ask Judith Schumacher to come forward, please, and take a chair at the table, please, and we're gonna start, I'm gonna tee it up a little bit, she's gonna make a couple of comments, and then Amanda, while we're doing that, if you can get our presentation up and ready to go, that would be fantastic. Again, I know Peter's joined us, welcome Peter. We are going to, and I'm just gonna ask, are we recording?
We are now, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just going to tee this up a little bit, and then Judith will offer some information. Peter, we were just saying we are moving along quickly tonight, just so that you know, because both Judith and I have to head to Wellfleet right away for, yes, you're smiling 'cause you know full well where we're going. Fin common board of selectmen in Wellfleet tonight. So we're gonna move this along relatively quickly, but the truth is, and I know Peter, you know too, because you've been in so many of our meetings, we want to thank you again for joining us a number of times. So the purpose of tonight really is to just do, go back over the broad overview of our budget. And so with the notion of thinking that we've already gone through line by line over and over again in the different meetings, and just a reminder that the elementary budget is starkly different than the region, and the region has its own budget and finance committee. Judith sat as a chair of that for several years, and this year, Tom Gibson serves as a chair on that committee. And so that committee has the oversight, and, and they dig in very, very deeply to the, the region. But the region is a bit more complex animal. One of the things that we took a look at this year, and this is something, again, for those of you who've been following for the past couple of years, since I've come in, every year we've done a little bit of housekeeping on our budget, and particularly with regards to different line items, making sure things were in the right lines. And part of that is because when DES egos to grab information, they want to grab the right information, and they're looking at certain codes, and they're still looking at certain lines. So that, that has been a lot of work for us. And Judy, in a second, is gonna talk about the reclassifications, because this was our next natural evolution in terms of steps, in terms of housekeeping. And so normally, we don't bring the region to these particular meetings, but in light of the work that's been done this year, which has been enormous, it made sense to bring Judy in to just talk a little bit about it, and why we did it, and why your budget looks the way that it does. So Judith, do you want to just pick up from that and just talk about the region for a little bit, and your vantage point?
Sure, and there is a reason that your budget looks the way it does. It's not because we were being tricky or mean or anything. But there has long been, nobody can remember how long, expenses that were contained in what we call the region-only budget. The region-only budget, we have a budget for the high school, we have a budget for the middle school, and then we have a region-only budget which takes care of items that can't be separated between the two, like transportation, like charter school, like benefits. And in that part of the, of that budget, there was what turned out to be just over a million dollars of expenses that the region has paid for since anybody can remember, but that either do not belong to the region at all, or are shared with the elementary schools, and so I'll go over them. The ones that don't belong to the region at all are the benefits for the pre-K staff. So the pre-K salaries are in the elementary school budgets. The region is not a pre-K region, it's not even a K region, covered all of the benefits. So now those benefits are going to the elementary schools along to be with their buddy, the salary. And the same thing is true with the OTPT staff. The salaries got charged out from the region, got charged out to the elementary schools, but not the benefits. Now the benefits are gonna follow the salaries. So that's that category, and that adds up to just about six hun, $360,000. So those are elementary school expenses. The other category of about $730,000 are benefits that belong, or expenses that belong in the central office, so that, and that all, in that central office budget, all five school districts share. Again, the majority of them were benefits. So the region, up until now, paid for all of the benefits of the central office. The health benefits, the retirement benefits, and the health benefits for the retired staff. So again, these benefits go to the central office along with the salary. So they're there together. The other is, is, are three individuals, one who was split between the high school and the middle school. But 40% will then be split among the four elementary schools. And the reason for this is, one, the expenses didn't belong in the, in the region-only budget, two, we now have a better idea of what the preschool program actually costs, and what the central office actually costs. And that's the kind of information that, that you need. Also, I will say that this million dollars has inflated the, the, the region's, like, per pupil cost, which DESI uses all of that information in lots of different ways. Specifically, one of the ways is to calculate what we pay when our students go to charter school. So that million dollars has been in that calculation, and we have likely been overpaying, I have no idea by how much, for things like this for 30 years. So it matters, and now it's clean.
That's exactly right.
Now everybody's where it belongs.
And I'm sure that when Dr. Brand comes in, he'll see that there, as much as we've done everything we can to this point in time, he will probably still find some other things, because I know that there's some areas that I would still go back and look at again, right? But this year was monumental, it was a monumental task for us. And so that's, just a reminder before I go into our presentation, that was why we had each of our buildings do their budgets first, and make sure that they came in where they came in at, within like that 3%, maybe 4% type range, right? You'll see that the middle school actually came in at 2%. So, so each school came in at that, and then what we call, we had this, what we call an overlay of these rate classifications that came down. So for example, Bill was at 3-point-something percent when he did his budget, then the overlay comes in, and suddenly he's at 6%. And so you know, when I spoke with, for example, the town manager and brewster yesterday were saying, you know, you almost can't even look at percentages this year because it's really more about dollars, right? Because percentages are out the window because of what we've done. So for example, exactly as Judy said, for central office, and then Amanda, I will go to the slide deck. The central office came in, it came in a little higher this year because we're changing the platform for the business software and that kind of thing, right? And so it ended up being around that 5% mark, but once we added these positions in that we're talking about, suddenly it was up 47%. You say, wait, how can you have a budget that's up 47%? Well, 'cause it's a baby budget, it's a little tiny budget, right? Just like 2 to 3 million. So you add that type of overlay on, and suddenly, you know... And before, one last comment before I go to this, the one thing that I would have to say too is how appreciative I am of everyone for understanding this. You know, I've, I've spoken with three town administrators or managers in the last couple of days, and every one of them has said to me, this should have happened 30 years ago. So people know that this, it was time for cleanup, right? So I think we feel really good about this right now, and I think the region should feel really good. But what it does do is it kind of resets every budget across NPS now, so that next year, you're gonna look for that typical 2, 3, 4% because everybody's where they should be. And one, one thing too, Judy's absolutely right, and I think that this just needs to be stressed too, the fact that when, when you've got, in the region's case, the fact that you've got that number, that, that amount of money, an extra million dollars in there, you can imagine that that affects your per pupil rate, right? And so then that means, okay, how does that affect your Chapter 70? How does that affect IDEA, all your Title I grants, all your title grants? You think about it. Esser, like, think about the impact. So I think, you know, I give Gail Brier all the credit in the world too, because we talked about this as Chair of 54, Unit 54, right? And it was like, okay, do we do this year, do we not? And, and her comment is, I know Judy has said, is, I guess we rip off the Band-Aid, and, and let's just do this. And so that was really the approach that we took.
May I make one quick point?
Of course, please.
Just for the committee's information, in Eastham, our budget is, I forgot the term, so that whatever money...
Oh, omnibus.
Omnibus, so what comes off of the, the region budget and gets added to ours will not make a difference in the total amount the town of Eastham is paying for education.
Because it's kind of a bit of a wash, do you know what I mean? Because they've got the hole now, and now this money is over, lying over here. Now, it's still, the budget generally is still a little bit higher, but we've had communication with Rich and Jackie, and we feel very comfortable moving forward right now, so that's kind of where it's landed. Okay, I will go through, thanks, Anne. And thank you to all of our elementary chairs too, because this has been, this has been a challenging thing to work through in our principles. So this is just a quick broad stroke overview here, Eastham School Committee members, of course, your NPS administrative team, and there's your regional school committee members. To the next page. This is your enrollment, you basically monitor your enrollment throughout the course of the year, and this is just us putting in a nice neat little matrix that you can see where your student population is. Hasn't, you know, you've held pretty steady when you take a look at the last couple of years. And then Bill says, yes, and we can add how many more in the last couple of months?
As of March, it's actually 185.
There you go, thank you. Onto the next slide, please. Thanks, Amanda. This just does a breakdown of your elementary selected populations, it gives you an idea of where you sit with your high knees, your English learners, your low income, and students with disabilities. So you can see that your English language learners, for example, is relatively stabilized at the bottom, there are not a whole lot of upticks on that. Your high knees has kind of gone up and is dead, just down a little bit, you know, when you take a look at how, how it's flowed. To the next slide. Bill is just gonna talk for a minute about where every dollar goes, but this is just again, you can take a look at this later. This is, there are no new numbers for you here tonight, like, nothing is new, other than you've got that overlay, but you've seen that as well. So Bill, I mean, I think we just want to kind of focus on the bottom line, there's nothing really new that's there.
I don't really have much to say, no, other than it's really funding pretty much leveled services, you know what I mean, that we've had over the last few years. Okay, so this reflects, you know, the present, you know, personnel and, and leveled services, really, for, for next year, so.
I would agree, and so, you know, and there's all kinds of different ways that you look at a budget, right? You look at the budget how you first initially got, that looks like this, and then you start to take it apart, and you start saying, okay, what are cost centers? Where's your personnel? Where's your utilities? How much is your transportation gonna cost, et cetera? So this is taking all of this and just kind of putting it into a bit of a different matrix. To the next page. Thank you. This is with your overlay, and the number that you see as your bottom line kind of sits in the middle there under FY26 down, like, basically the third column. This shows you now, see there, there's your 47% in central office, if you take a look down at the second to last line there, as opposed to sitting at 4 or 7%. So that's why you know that this has got the overlay of the reclassifications on, on top of it. So you can see too, like, your elementary regular day, even with the overlay, is, is still really low. To the next slide. This is the regional district, just a preview. Hi, Mary, welcome. This is just a preview of the FY26, you know, I don't know, Judy, if you want to go through, or you want me to quickly go through? I'm good, keep going, okay. So just the fact that you're gonna have new administration in place. The NRHS campus renovations will be complete. We've got the implementation of new financial software, which I had alluded to earlier, and what we're gonna love about that is some of that software will now tie in with three of the four communities. So a lot of the duplication of services that's happening, and has happened for the last 20 to 30 years, will go away. So that's going to be awesome, and it's going to start to minimize the amount of manual inputting versus, like, you just have to do it once, not here and in Eastham, and in Wellfleet, and in Bruce, that, that's going to go away. So we're really pleased with that. The NPS in total, in its totality, will start to work on the development of a new five-year strategic plan. The one that's in place is currently running out. We have an increase in energy savings at the middles, at the middle and high school, but we have, also have some additional expenses at the high school as we've gone really quite green in that building. And so there's a little bit of expense that comes with that. We are establishing Special Education Stabilization Fund, just exactly as we've done here, but the region had not done it, so the region's going to do that. So you'll see that pop up on, on most, if not all, of our ATM warrants in this upcoming cycle. We'll establish a Transportation Capital Reserve Fund. In short, what's happened there is our leases are now paid for, and collectively, the transportation team has decided that they're going to continue to fund that and put that, the monies in that, that they, they capture into a reserve fund, so that there will be money there when it's time to buy new buses or go into a new lease program. So they're being conservative with this, but also being, having great insight into the future and saying, you know, we can see this coming, so we're gonna put the money in the bank right now and save for it. Increased focus on communication across NPS, there is a team that's in place, they're looking at doing an RFP to do a study across NPS, and you'll see more to come on that. And finally, there's the reclassification of the region-only expenses that we talked about earlier. To the next slide, please, Amanda. Thank you. This gives you an idea of just the general trend in total for, for the region. And one of the things, of course, that, you know, we kind of take a look at is the blue, because that's where you're looking at students that are going out to Lighthouse Charter, Sturgis, the School Choice, the Tech, et cetera. So that's something that we always have our eyes on, is where is our student population going? To the next slide. There's NRSD staffing levels, that you can take a quick peek at that, and, and you can see kind of where we're at for both the middle school and the high school. High school is seeing more of a drop than middle school, but middle school, you'll see more of a drop in the, the support staff line than the professional line. Anytime we have a retirement, we have someone move, et cetera, we always take a look and ask, does this position need to be backfilled, or is this something that could be picked up in some other way? So we're losing staff as best we can through natural attrition. It doesn't always work like that, but we try really hard to do that where, where it's possible. To the next slide. That just gives a breakdown of staffing changes at NRMS and NRHS, some additional staff that they're requesting, but then you also see staff reductions. So it's a bit, a bit of a wash there. Actually, it's even more than a wash, that I think it ends up being more reduction than it does being adds. To the next slide. There's just a pie graph for those of you, again, we can present these budgets in all kinds of different ways. This is NRSD budgets at a glance, so you can take a look, NRMS, NRHS, et cetera, around that pie graph. And Amanda, I'll have, make sure that you send this along to, to us, to be sure that we can send this presentation out to our friends in Eastham, please. To the next slide? Thank you. There's just a little bit of a breakdown at the middle school. The only thing I'm gonna ask you to really hone in on is the increase at the 2.02, if you see in the far right-hand side. That's basically where their budget came in with a dollar increase of $194,238. To the next. Same thing, if you take a look at that right-hand corner there, you see that the budget comes in for the high school at 3.05 with a dollar increase of $398,409. To the next slide. This is a breakdown of the region only and the budget requests, as we look at all kinds of stuff on that. I'm not gonna go through, I know you can read, so I don't think you want me reading every single line, but it gives you an idea of the, the work that's, that surrounds our building of the region budget, which is, as you can just see from there, quite a bit different than when we build an elementary school budget, which is a single municipality. To the next slide. That, that gives you just an idea, again, just a different matrix, so the exact same things that I already noticed. So if you take a look, for example, over on the far right-hand side, there's the middle school at the 2.02, remember, we had that a couple slides ago, and there's your high school at the 3.05, there's your central office at 40, basically 46%. And notice that the region is at a minus .58, right? That's because of the classifications, reclassifications. So that gives you basically a ballpark idea of how this all kind of ties together. Moving on to the next slide. Yeah, this is a hard one to read, but you, you will be able to when you take a look at it. We call this the big sheet, Judy? Because we can't come up with another name for it.
We're clever.
It's a, it's the big sheet, and this basically lays out everything for the middle and high school in the region. So, and not in the intimate detail, but the broad stroke, so you can see all the various categories. And again, just a different way of looking at it. And then further down, you see there's the high, you can't see, but underneath, it's really small, but underneath the one column there, you'll see the, the debt for the high school, et cetera. So that's all, basically pulls everything together in one sheet. That was, that was Judy's idea, right? I think you created this. No, you didn't create this? No.
Not in my worst nightmare.
So that's, that kind of gives you a full snapshot of the operating budget. To the next slide. And again, this is, this has been sent now around to the, the town administrators, town managers, so that they could see, and they could start to create their own what-if scenarios, so that, because the budget, the region now has been passed, and so the region impacts kind of everything this year because of the reclassifications. So as soon as they passed it, we sent it around to the town managers and the town administrators so they could take a look, look at it. And so that, if you take a look in the middle of the top blue box, that's kind of where you're looking at your key, your key figures in terms of the statutory method and how it's, how it works with your student population. So that's the broad stroke overview of everything, and basically how it connects. Happy to take any questions. Thank you, Amanda. You're, the, the budget that you have yourself for, for Eastham Elementary has not changed. It's, there's no changes to report tonight on it at all. So it's basically the same budget you've seen all the way along, and it includes the reclassifications. So happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Clancy? Any questions from anyone who is watching that may have a question? Mary, yes, Mary?
Yeah, I have a...
Mary, could you just come to the table, please, so we get your...
I have a question, this is on the Eastham Elementary School one, where the, it's, the central office, the, the monies were allocated based on the average of the prior three years, which, which makes sense to me, but then on another section, you've just used the, no, actually, that doesn't make sense to me, because that hasn't been passed, the average of three years.
No, that has not been passed at all. And that, Mary, that is actually, the only thing that average is looking at is the number of students. That becomes a rolling average through the regional, through the regional agreement, so it doesn't refer to anything else for, that's the only place that three-year rolling average would end up being.
So I guess I don't understand why you're, why you're using it anywhere versus the actual enrollment itself. Just, just the enrollment for the year versus the, a three, average of three years, because it's, you list it in another place, and I've got it right now.
No, I, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that I understand exactly what the question is, and I apologize for that.
No, that's okay. Let me see, the central office subcommittee reclassified, blankety-blankety-blank. Let me see, the central office subcommittee reclassified, blankety-blankety-blanket, and each elementary district was allocated costs based on the central office allocation formula, utilizing the October 1, 2024 enrollment numbers, which makes sense to me.
Right, right.
Then, on the next page at the top.
Is there an error there?
You've got, based on the same equitable formula of the average of the prior three years.
That's for the, that's for the preschool. I don't know how the preschool operates.
That could be preschool.
The preschool, I believe the preschool operates on an average of...
So it's a totally independent, yeah, preschool.
So the preschool costs were done on an average of three, and everything else was done on the basic enrollment of October 1st.
October 1st.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, all righty.
Okay.
That was my main question.
Thank you, Mary, appreciate your questions.
Thank you, and Judy, thank you.
Thank you both very much, yes. If there are no further questions or comments at this point, may I have a motion to come out of public hearing and go back to our regular school committee meeting?
I have questions about this.
Oh, you have a question.
The questions, though, can come, no, they should come in once you go back into your meeting. This is for the public, so, yeah.
May I have a motion to go back into our regular...
I'll make a motion to go back into our meeting.
Sarah, motion by Sarah, second?
Second.
Second by Deborah, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now back at our regular monthly Eastham Elementary School meeting. Bill, I'm going to let you go from here with, in terms of, is there any budget comments you'd like to make, or we can just go with questions at this point?
I would just go with questions.
Okay. Sarah, you have a question you said?
Yeah, it's just at the last meeting, you said that at this meeting you would address what the $70,713 reduction was in the other salaries staff.
That's from the January 13 budget, the comment.
Yeah, the, sorry, version two, where, where the percent increase got down to 3.2%.
Okay, so I'm going to take a stab at this, Bill, and then you're welcome to jump in. Normally, as a rule of thumb, that, that is, that's a common practice for us to do that in any budget, to be honest with you, whether it's Eastham or any budget, because that, that tells you, that's an indicator that there could still be some changes to staff that are made between here and the end of the school year. And so your principal's predicting ahead of time, saying, this is what, I think that there's going to be around 70,000 that we can, I feel very confident in saying you can remove that from. But at this point in time, I think it would be too, far too early for you to say, because, unless you know right now.
No, to comment specifically on things now, because it's all about meeting student needs.
Right.
And the changes that may arise in the future. But I don't have anything definitive at this point to share.
Okay. Good question, though, good catch on that.
Any other questions for Bill? We've got the FY '26 budget that has been presented previously to us.
I have a question.
Yes, Mary.
And it's back to the question that Sarah asked on the 70,000, and then there's custodial and other salaries. And I, I understand your, your response to Sarah's question. Is it your feeling that as a result of what you hope to accomplish with these salary reductions, that there will be, will not be any issues as far as student population and teachers and, and your needs at the school?
At the present time, you know, this budget right now, the way it looks, is reflective of meeting the needs that are there in the building. As we've talked several times during this whole entire process, is that it's very difficult to predict, do you know what I mean? Because students move in and out of our town, you know, not during necessarily the budget season.
Right, right.
You know, so after we, you know, they vote tonight, and if this is approved, you know, something could happen and things could change, you know, in the next month or two. It could change in the summer. So it's very difficult to predict that. But as we stand right now, as we sit right now, this budget will, you know, is level funding the services that we provide right now, and based on...
Will be able to be met with these reductions?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Bill, a question. When do we, when do you have an idea of the number of students coming in next year? Kindergarten, I'm talking about kindergarten, obviously. Do you have an idea when, the total number of kindergarten students that'll be coming in yet?
Well, at the moment, you know, with the census and then reaching out to, you know, some of the other private preschools, we're close to 25 at this point, but then registration will start in the next month or so, so we'll know for sure.
I forgot when registration's...
But that's kind of a ballpark right now, we're feeling about 25, you know, which is, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for Bill? If there are no further questions, may I have a motion to accept the budget, as this budget is the final budget for FY '26, and it would be a total budget of, let me check the right numbers, $4,812,862, which is, represents an 8.47% raise from this year.
I'll make a motion to accept the budget.
Deborah makes a motion to accept, is read. Second?
I'll second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Our budget for FY '26 has been accepted, Bill, and I thank you.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Absolutely, no, thank you.
Lot of work involved in this. I recognize that, having said of the central office budget committee, you've met three times, we met eight this year.
Eight times, yeah, for central committee, yeah, central office committee. So at this point in time, I think Judith and I will take our leave, because we have to head up to Walthleet.
I'll see you in Eastham, see you on Thursday.
Yes, see you in Eastham on Thursday, that's right.
I'm referring to, I'm going to the FinCom meeting with Brooke on Thursday, that's what I'm referring to right now. Okay, now we'll go back to our agenda. Let's see, all right, let's do chairs, the administrative reports. I have just a couple of quick things. First of all, I know I've sent you the copy of the request for proposals for the North Regional Efficiency and Regionalization Planning Services. It's a grant that was accepted, that has been accepted, and, or has been, I should say, has been given to all of the outer Cape towns, sorry, Brewster, Orleans, Eastham, and Walthleet are involved with this. And I did send, just so you're aware, I did send an email to our town administrator, as an individual citizen, not as a member of this committee, saying that I was surprised to see there wasn't actually a grant in place, because once we had heard about this a couple of years ago, saying it was going to be applied for, but never heard anything further. And I had concerns about not affecting the type of grant that's written. I believe we should always look for better ways or more efficient ways to provide all services necessary for our children. But the word "regionalization," I know, I've already spoken to people saying you will be seeing this word, and some citizens in the town are really already a little nervous about seeing that word, that their child may be sent to another elementary school. And I've told them, at this point, that is not the purpose of the grant. Purpose is to really look at services for the towns. And there will be, I know the superintendent has met, they've been committing meetings with these superintendents and town administrators already concerning this, and there will be, I guess, at some point, and my understanding is, there will be a committee put in place that will have both school administration and school committee members. That has not been formulated, as far as I know. But Bill, has this started, or have you had any work done on this yet, like, in terms of visits?
No, but there are some scheduled visits in April, I believe, with town managers and from each of the school districts, coming to kind of look around and take a tour of the school.
Okay.
That's coming up in April.
Because it's written, it's being done in March, that's why I was wondering. Thank you. The other piece I have is, I believe you've all received an email for it, but as of, after March 31st, are no longer any virtual meetings, at least to date. The virtual meetings has not, proposals have not been updated. So as of now, come April 1st, everything is in person, folks. We all have to be here, so we have quorums. It's, I know it's going to be a change, but unfortunately, unless something happens, and they have been all kinds of discussions at the state level and the government's level to keep the verbal, the virtual meetings in place, but as of now, that has not occurred. And the other piece is, Brooke had a meeting with the superintendent, with the, excuse me, the chairs and vice chairs of the committees about two weeks ago, and one of the pieces she brought forward was, she felt that the superintendent evaluation process should be really looked at. And because of that, Gail Brier, who I believe chairs that subcommittee of the superintendent evaluation form, will be probably calling a meeting at some point. I'm not sure if it'll happen this year or beginning next year, just to look at the whole formula, the format used, the formula used, just to see if there's a less stressful way for everyone to get involved with doing the superintendent's evaluation. So I just wanted to give those to you. And, Bill, onto your report.
All right. We have the report that I sent you. I just have a couple of highlights to share, and the first one really is the appreciation for all the parent volunteers, you know, the students, staff, family members, all the local sponsors, who worked tirelessly, really, to plan and facilitate the fundraiser. It culminated on Friday with a glow run, where the kids ran laps around the gym, lots of parent volunteers making tally marks for each lap they ran. They had a blast, and it was just so well-done, so well-organized, and just a huge thank you to the Eastham community, really, because it was an enormous fundraiser and extremely successful on so many levels, and especially the funds. So it was very, it was great. So thank you to everybody for that. And just to highlight, we've got a busy week this week. Bingo for Books is going on tonight, and we have a book fair, again, with all parent volunteers, so we appreciate that help. Report cards, second term closed, and report cards are going home tomorrow, and conferences on Thursday and Friday. And then MCAS testing begins on Monday for grade four students, and will continue until April vacation with ELA testing and science, and then math will be after the break. And, oh, very exciting today, we started our first lessons with Sustainable Cape Farmer in the School Program, and I believe grade two and three and grade four went to that today, and so the gardens renovated and, and great for, ready for planting for the spring, so, all good things.
Thank you.
Anybody questions or anything, comments about anything that's happening at EES at the moment?
Have you planted what you're planting in the garden yet?
No, and what's nice is that we've contracted with Sustainable Cape, you know, and so they're kind of in charge of everything, and there was a teacher there today that was assigned to the school, farmer, you know, so.
Thank you, look forward to the...
Yeah, no, it's going to be great.
My only comment is, I saw today that Calmer Choice is closing down, are no longer going to offer services after June.
I just got that email, too. I know, which is too bad.
Yeah.
But the thing, but the thing with that, though, is that we have people that have been trained, our adjustment counselors trained, and we'll be able to continue that. And the teachers right now are going through some training, which they will complete. They're taking a course, about, probably about 12 educators. And so I think we have enough understanding of the concepts and the skills that we can teach the kids and continue with that.
Great.
So, yeah, I was very disappointed to hear that.
That is disappointing to hear. It's a great program. Okay, superintendent is left. Onto the FY '25 budget. Giovanni was on a medical leave right now, so if you have any questions on this, if Bill can possibly answer, Bill can answer, or else I can, I can get the question...
No, on the expenditure report?
On the expense report, right. I can get to Jim.
I could have prepared for that, but I'm not, so.
But for the committee, any questions you may have on the expense report, I can get to Jim, get to the central office to get an answer for us on it. I went through it just quickly, and it, we're doing okay so far, so I'm going to leave it right at that. Okay, committees, let's see. Devin, we'll start with you, committees.
We just did our work for the collaborative, and the transportation subcommittee hasn't met since the last meeting.
Has not met, okay. Sarah?
I missed the last communications subcommittee meeting, and for some reason, they always, they're like, back, they're a month late in sending out the minutes, so I haven't, but there's supposed to be another one on Thursday. And then, since Monica's not here, I did go to the last parents group...
Group, okay.
Meeting, so a lot of the discussion was about preparing for the fun run and just other future events.
And Bill, your school council meets this week, do they?
Thursday, yes.
Thursday, this Thursday, okay. And I'm sure you're still updating the improvement plan?
Right. It's pretty much good to go, I think, and we'll present, we'll present it in June.
June will be presented, okay. I won't be here to see it, but...
You can do it in May, if you want.
If you can, I'd love to see it.
All right, we'll get it to you in May.
Thank you. I think I'll still be here. I think our election's after our school committee meeting.
And I should say, the papers have been completed for the person running for your position.
I'm glad to hear that. Very good.
Completed and submitted.
Deborah, you have not...
No, but...
March 31st, I'm sure.
March 31st, all set. They changed the time, so I'll be able to be a participant on that committee.
I did make, I did make a note on that, to my notes, saying you'd be there, thanks for, because the meeting she was attending was held at 3:00 in the afternoon, and since she teaches school, she can't be here at 3:00 in the afternoon, they're now going to start them at 4:30, and that's the behavioral, behavioral committee. Okay, policy, we're still hopefully finalizing before the end of May, we'll have it all finalized, hopefully, hopefully.
And then will there still be a policy subcommittee?
Oh, there'll still be a policy subcommittee, because Judy brought something to my attention already that needs to be addressed.
Okay.
A fundraising policy needs to be readdressed already. So, yeah, that will stay in place, just because I'm leaving, the policy subcommittee will still be here, folks. Let's see, what else? The central office, as I said, that was, we completed eight meetings to get the budget in place, and I think that's all my present committees at time. Thank you very much. Approval of minutes was February 11th. We will be tabling that for this month and be approving those in April, along with the February and March minutes.